From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Convene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you, good morning, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 24, 2002, 9:00 AM Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the flag salute led by Supervisor Perez. And please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Thank you Chair, please stand. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. All right, I'm now going to call on Nick Cullen, our Director of Animal Services, to introduce our Pet of the Week, and we're doing it from the podium because our dog's a little bit larger today than usual. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning Chairman Scrivner, members of the board, Nick Cullen, Director of Animal Services. Yes, I have a larger breed dog with me this morning, this is Leila. Leila is about a year, between a year, a year and a half. She's a shepherd, bully mix. She still puffs, so she has a lot of energy, but the thing we love about her is she gets along with other dogs really well. She's very curious, as you can see this morning, and she's going to make somebody an awesome family pet. She's already spayed, so she's ready to go home, and somebody just needs to provide the loving, warm home for her, and she's going to make somebody a lifetime pet.
All right, thank you so much, Nick. Okay, we will begin by considering our consent agenda, and agendas are located on the tables near the doors at the rear of the chambers for anyone wishing to follow along. All items listed with a CA above the number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session items. And so I will read the consent agenda item numbers now. Starting on page two, we have item one on consent, as well as five and six. On page three, all items nine through fifteen are on consent. On page four, all items sixteen through twenty-one are on consent. On page five, all items twenty-two through twenty-eight are on consent. On page six, all items twenty-nine through thirty-six. All items.
From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Convene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, May 24, 2002, 9:00 AM Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the flag salute led by Supervisor Perez. And please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Thank you, Chair. Please stand. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, I'm now going to call on Nick Cullen, our Director of Animal Services, to introduce our Pet of the Week, and we're doing it from the podium because our dog's a little bit larger today than usual. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning, Chairman Scrivner, members of the board, Nick Cullen, Director of Animal Services. Yes, I have a larger breed dog with me this morning. This is Leila. Leila is, she's about a year, between a year, a year and a half. She's a shepherd, bully mix. She still pups her. She has a lot of energy, but the thing we love about her is she gets along with other dogs really well. She's very curious, as you can see this morning, and she's going to make somebody an awesome family pet. She's already spayed, so she's ready to go home, and somebody just needs to provide the loving, warm home for her, and she's going to make somebody a lifetime pet.
All right. Thank you so much, Nick. Okay, we will begin by considering our consent agenda, and agendas are located on the tables near the doors at the rear of the chambers for anyone wishing to follow along. All items listed with a CA above the number are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session items. And so I will read the consent agenda item numbers now. Starting on page two, we have item one on consent, as well as five and six. On page three, all items nine through 15 are on consent. On page four, all items 16 through 21 are on consent. On page five, all items 22 through 28 are on consent. On page six, all items 29 through 36 are on consent, however, item number 34 has been withdrawn by the department and will not be considered. On page seven, all items 37 through 44 on consent. Page eight, all items 45 through 52 on consent. And on page nine, all items 53 through 59 are on consent. So now I'll ask if there are any members of the public that would like to make any comments on the consent agenda?
Good morning, Dennis McLean. Good morning, Board and staff. I have a question on item number 12 regarding the Auditor Controller. Can you explain that to the layman terms, please, financially, what that means?
Okay, so this is to request authorization for Auditor Controller County Clerk to use fiscal year 2021-22 adjusted appropriations as more restrictive spending authority in accordance with Government Code Section 29124B beginning July 1, 2022 until the fiscal year 2022-23 budget is adopted. Do we have a representative from the Auditor Controller's office with us this morning? Okay, I don't see one. I'll turn to our CAO and ask if he can provide any information for the item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a request for authorization to use more restrictive spending limitation under the County Budget Act. I'll read the board letter for the courtesy of the viewers at home in the audience. The most recent revision of the County Budget Act, Government Code Section 29120, requires not only that a recommended budget is produced by June 30, but that counties use the recommended budget anticipated appropriation limits until the final budget is approved. The county's financial management system does not accommodate the second change. However, the County Budget Act allows your board to impose more restrictive expenditure limits than those approved by the recommended budget until the budget is adopted. Prior-year adjusted appropriations for fiscal year 2122 would qualify under this section as more restrictive than the 2022-23 recommended budget. The Auditor Controller County Clerk is requesting authorization to invoke the more restrictive spending limitation as of July 1, 2022, to be in effect until the adoption of the budget. Therefore, it is recommended that your board authorize the Auditor Controller County Clerk to use the 2021-22 adjusted appropriations as more restrictive spending authority in accordance with Government Code Section 29124B beginning July 1, 2022 until the 2022-2023 budget is adopted. If your board would like me to seek out the representative from the Auditor Controller's office, I would be happy to do so, and it just so happens that somebody is coming in.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Regarding the item that's on consent, it really has to do with the fact that we will not have a budget starting the new year, and therefore, we need to have the limits in place for what the budget will be as we're progressing through the beginning of next year until the budget is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Bedard. Appreciate the explanation. Any questions from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Couch.
Can you, I know what he may be thinking. You said, "We're not going to have a budget." You mean, "We're not going to have an adopted final budget starting July 1? That comes at the end of August, so you need this done, so you have, what do we call it, the spending plan or something like that, that we adopt at the end of June?"
That's correct.
Okay, that's what you're referencing when you say, "We're not going to have a budget."
We're not going to have the final adopted budget. That's correct.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bedard. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Good morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. On CA 30, Request for Human Resources for Authorization to Destroy Records No Longer Necessary or Required. I'd like for further explanation on that and how far back you're going and what type of records are being destroyed. I know I used to work for the county, and at one time, they did destroy records, and we actually needed them. They were vital to CPS investigations and some of the things that we needed. So I'm not sure why these are being destroyed and what are we going to do with them, and why can't they be on microfiche?
Thank you. This is an item under County Council, so I'll turn to our County Council, Margot Razan.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. This particular request, sorry, there are a number of them, from human resources. Look, they are records of recruitment for employee positions dating from 2007 through So it is a large number of boxes of recruitment records for employee recruitments. The law allows documents to be destroyed after a certain period of time. When that happens, or when a department wants to destroy records, they go through them, they make sure that there's nothing that is needed for the future. Many of these perhaps are now microfished because so much of HR has been put onto digital records. That request then comes to my office, re-review it, and make sure that there's nothing that needs to be maintained, either because of pending litigation or some other legal requirement. And after we make that review, we submit it to your board for authorization, and destroying these records would be a normal, routine business.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on the consent agenda or comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board for a motion.
Motion on consent.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. That takes us back to page two on our agenda, item number two, under Resolutions and Proclamations. This is to proclaim May 2022 as Military Appreciation Month in Kern County and present certificate of recognition honoring Frank Lee, who was posthumously awarded the Congressional Gold Medal for his dedicated service to our country during World War II, and Supervisor Perez will make this presentation.
Thank you so very much, Chair. A motion on the proclamation and certificate, items two and three.
Second.
Thank you.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
What a special morning, Josh. You look great, too.
Thank you.
Looking sharp. Well, good morning, Chairman Scrivner, excuse me, and members of the board. Today, it is with profound humility and pride that I stand before you to proclaim May 2022 as Military Appreciation Month in Kern County and officially recognize U.S. Navy veteran Frank Lee, the one and only, who is posthumously awarded the Congressional Gold Medal for his dedicated service to this great country during World War II. Since formally introduced in 1999, the month of May has been designated as National Military Appreciation Month. May is ideal, as you know, because it already hosts four days in honor of our armed forces. May 8th, VE Day to reflect on our nation's triumph over fascism, a never-ending struggle, as we know. Military Spouse Appreciation Day, Friday before Mother's Day, to thank those who support our nation's warriors. May 21st, Armed Forces Day, to honor those that currently don this nation's uniform. And May 30th, Memorial Day, to remember those men and women who have been buried in those Part of what makes today so profoundly special is that May happens to be Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, a time to honor and celebrate the profound contributions of Asian Americans. The Chinese-American World War II Veterans Congressional Gold Medal Act was passed only recently, in 2018, to further recognize some 20,000 Chinese-Americans who served valiantly in all operational theaters during World War II, while facing institutional discrimination and racism at home and within the military. These brave men and women fought for this nation to defend freedom, and we are forever indebted to their bravery, valor, and dedication. One of those veterans was U.S. Navy Petty Officer II Frank Lee, who served at Pearl Harbor from 1944 to 1946. Last month, Frank was awarded the Chinese-American World War II Veterans Congressional Gold Medal posthumously at a ceremony on the USS Iowa in San Pedro, California. His daughter Betty Lee Wong and son-in-law Wayne Wong were in attendance to receive the medal. I bet that was special. Following his military service, Frank married his wife, King Lee, in 1947, and they had four beautiful children, several grandchildren. Frank continued to serve his community in Wasco, California, when in 1953, him and his family opened the national market landmark, a local business that employed many community members, neighbors, young people, in 61 years, or for 61 years, a glorious reign in Wasco, California. Frank was a proud member of the Honor Flight Kern County, traveling to Washington, D.C. with the November 2014 contingent with his son, Robert, as his guardian. Frank lived the American dream and was a true and prolific example of the greatest generation. His legacy, of course, lives on, not just in this boardroom and in our official record, thank you, Kathy, but in our lives, clearly, in your lives. Chairman and fellow board members, proudly, humbly, and with great passion and gratitude, join you in honoring our U.S. Navy veteran Frank Lee and proclaiming May as Military Appreciation Month. Josh, Kern County's top warrior, Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, State of California, officially proclaims May 2022 as Military Appreciation Month in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official Board Minutes. I know you'll have a few words in a moment. I want to thank you again for your service and acknowledge that alongside you today. To the family of Frank Lee, in posthumous recognition of being awarded the Congressional Gold Medal for his dedicated service to this great country and the U.S. Navy during World War II, and for exemplary public service and civic contributions to the community and Kern County, signed by our chairman and all supervisors, entered into the official Board Minutes and acknowledged appropriately for the remarkable, countless, precious, priceless contributions to this country, to Wasco, and this world. Thank you so much. God bless you and your family.
Thank you.
My name is Betty Lee Wong. My dad would be really proud, proud to receive this recognition as Chinese-American World War II veteran in the United States Navy. What an honor it is for me to receive this in behalf of my dad, Frank Lee, Petty Officer II. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Supervisor Perez has already outlined why May is Military Appreciation Month. So many amazing veterans, spouses, service members are being honored, and it's fitting because just this last weekend, I had the pleasure of being at the groundbreaking for Kern County's World War II Veterans Memorial, which is being constructed at Jastro Park, and then a short drive down to the Antrax train station, I got to partake in the Hometown Heroes Banner Program. The Kern River Blue Star Moms are honoring those men and women who are currently serving our nation. So our country, or our county, is no stranger to appreciating the military men and women that have given so much for our country. As we reflect on the battles won and the humanitarian aid provided by our nation's warfighters, and the liberties secured by our military throughout the world, it's paramount to remember that the armed forces is made up of patriotic individuals. We couldn't do what we do around the world, or even here at home, without the men and women willing to secure freedom and liberty across the globe, even when they don't receive those same liberties and freedoms here at home. The men and women willing to give up their own lives for the ideals of this country and what we were founded on, for people they'll never meet. And the men and women who put their lives on the line and are willing to pay the ultimate price to continue to live the American dream and provide that for other people. So as your board proclaims May Military Appreciation Month in Kern County, it is especially fitting that we get to recognize Frank Lee and his service to our nation during World War II. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you all so much. Next on our agenda is item number three, proclaim June through July 2022 as Kern County Libraries Annual Summer Reading Challenge and Lunch at the Library, and Supervisor Peters will present this item.
Thank you, Chairman Mr. Scrivner. Motion to approve item three.
You have a motion, a second, please cast your vote.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Good morning, Chairman Mr. Scrivner, members of the board. It's my honor today to proclaim June through July 2022 as Kern County Libraries Annual Summer Reading Challenge and Lunch at the Library. The Kern County Library is taking children, tweens, teens, and adults on an adventure via this summer reading challenge. This year's theme is Read Beyond the Beaten Path. The library is encouraging reading over the summer months to instill a love of recreational reading and to curb summer reading loss in our community. After two years of offering virtual and hybrid summer programs, the library welcomes the community back into libraries for in-person summer programs. All residents are encouraged to get out into the great outdoors and join the library for kickoff events and opportunities to cultivate curiosity through books, technology, entertaining programs, and all while having fun and lunch at your library. Lunch at the library is offered at 14 branch locations, Baker, Beal, Holloway Gonzales, Northeast Rathbun, Southwest, Arvin, Delano, Kern River Valley, McFarland, Ridgecrest, Taft, Wasco, and new this year, Lamont. The summer lunch program is a statewide collaboration between the Kern County Library, California Library Association, Summer Meal Coalition, Institute for Local Government, and multiple school districts within Kern County. So it is my honor to present this proclamation from the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern, officially proclaiming June through July 2022 as Kern County Libraries Annual Summer Reading Challenge and Lunch at the Library, and this has been entered into our official Board Minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman, Zach Scrivner. I'll turn it over to our Director, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm very happy to be here this morning to announce that we are back and in person and have hundreds of events across the county in our 22 branches. Thank you for naming off all of those lunch sites, supervisor, so I don't have to. And I actually think we have two more added, but I'll let Jasmine address that. We invite all of you to come and partake of the learning opportunities that we have. It's so important, especially the last two years during COVID, getting people back into the libraries, reading again, and curbing that learning loss that happens when kids are out of school. So one special thing that is personal to me is the guest reader series, and we have brought that back this summer, so we have many, I think Supervisor Peters, you're one of our guest readers, I think you are, this summer.
I am now.
If you're not, you are now. Yes, so please come and partake and support and see what your libraries are doing. We're active, we're thriving, and we have a lot of new staff, and they've been preparing for months, and so we're welcoming back with open arms. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jasmine.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Labasso. So this year, we're really, really excited because, obviously, we did not have as robust of a program in the last couple of years. It was hybrid and online. We continued the program, but the wonderful thing is we've really returned to what we were doing pre-COVID. All of our locations have programming nearly every single day during the summer that they're open. As Andy noted, we're actually up to 16 summer lunch locations between the time that letter was submitted and now, which means over two-thirds of our locations are offering meal service on the dates that they're open, which is incredibly exciting. Some of our communities...
We have so much going on, I encourage everybody to stop by. And if you can't stop, stop by, join online. Everything is available online. All the expansion that we have done in the last two years is permanent. There's online programming, there's online access through Beanstack. There just really is a lot going on. I have handed out already a sampling of what we have to offer. This is by no means comprehensive. I gave you a very small portion of it. We're still finalizing some last details here and there, but I encourage everybody to stop by, go online, check out what's going on, and know that this is for all ages, so not just children. We always highly emphasize children in these programs, but technically, when parents and adults in the community also participate, we're modeling that behavior for our children. And in a county that needs this type of support for literacy, it's very important that we all participate together in these challenges. So I encourage everybody here to hopefully sign up. Maybe we'll see you sign up online and stop by. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item number seven on our agenda, which is Public Presentations. This portion, excuse me. What, what, oh, oh, I'm sorry, public request. Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate it. Item number four, my apologies. This is under public requests. Request of Jeremy Tobias, Chief Executive Officer, Community Action Partnership of Kern to address the Board and provide a brief presentation in recognition and celebration of the two-year anniversary of the M Street Navigation Center, including an update regarding the June 6 opening of the Safe Camping and Safe Parking Projects at the Navigation Center. Good morning, Mr. Tobias.
Thank you. Good morning, Honorable Chair and members of the Board. I'm Jeremy Tobias, CEO of CAP-K. Thank you for giving us a chance to share a brief report on the M Street Navigation Center as we approach our two-year anniversary, and we prepare to open the Safe Camping and Safe Parking Project. CAP-K has honored to partner with the County of Kern in the ongoing work to address homelessness in our region, and we are pleased with the results of our work so far. As you know, this facility has added 150 beds to the critical need here in Kern County, offering temporary low-barrier shelter for hundreds of people experiencing homelessness. And of course, we are adding more options for shelter-resistant residents with the Safe Camping and Safe Parking Program. Again, thank you for giving us a chance to give you a brief overview, and I will now turn it over to Lori Hewie, our M Street Navigation Center Program Administrator, who will give you, share some highlights with you with a brief presentation. Thank you. Lori?
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the Board. So we have a brief presentation. So it has been two years since we opened the M Street Navigation Center. So as of April of 2022, we have served over 1,200 residents, we've seen 52 pets, and we've had 133 homeless individuals placed into permanent housing. Next slide. So we continue to offer three meals a day. One of the things that we have included was doing hot and cold meals, and we're also offering a variety of different meals. We have spaghetti, fried chicken, mashed potatoes. We do holiday events, and everything is donated by the community. Next slide. So the reason why we are so successful is because we have daily check-ins with our navigators. We do our weekly town hall meetings to where we listen to our residents. We hold weekly staff meetings. We have monthly trainings with Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Our individuals participate with our project higher-ups. So there's many courses and classes that we offer there to give the tools so that they can succeed. Next slide. So our, we've increased our referral source. So it's through Flood Ministries. We take referrals through probation and parole, law enforcement, hospitals, the recovery station, and through mental health. We have our partnership with Kern Medical, Kern Behavioral Health, we have a mobile dentist, the Bakersfield Higher Up, the animal services, and we also work with the Public Defender. Next slide. So we've had many volunteers. We've had over 100 volunteers currently serving at the Navigation Center. So we received donations through CityServe, Chase Burring, the Recovery Station, Home Depot, Lowe's, Costco. So just many people have decided they wanted to donate to the Navigation Center because they believe in what we're doing. Next slide. So the strengths are our leadership. So we have experienced leadership, we have a strong support team, they are all here, sitting with us right now. We've had 133 placements and family reunification, and we've done all this during a pandemic. When the whole country was closed down, Social Security just barely opened up at the beginning of this month. So we have strong staff advocacy, our community engagement, we have our volunteer and our donor program, and our, we're being good neighbors. You know, we're monitoring the clients both inside and outside the gates. Next slide. So as, as I mentioned, some of the challenges was the pandemic. You know, a lot of things were closed. When trying to get our vital documents with Social Security, DMV, all of these things were closed. So we had a high turnover in staff, people just not showing up for the interviews. We've had several overdoses at the Navigation Center. A few resulted in death. You know, this is a very high-stress, you know, difficult clientele that we work with. We have murders, we have rapists, we have arsonists. You know, on a daily basis, our staff goes through verbal abuse, physical abuse, just, and now there's a lack of affordable housing, you know, with the increase in the cost of living. Now we have all of these shelters, or we're all vying for the same housing vouchers. Next slide. So this is our M Street Leadership Team, and so I have John and Keith, who are our Operations Supervisor and our Program Supervisor. And next slide. And so this is just a presentation of what the Navigation Center currently looks like. I don't think that's, it's plain. So are there any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you, Chairman. What's next? Are we going to do more of the same? You know, obviously, the housing shortage is a fundamental and functional crisis that has got to be dealt with at a very high level, and so some of that is within our control, some of it's not. So where, where do you see, what's the next chapter for the, because this is all great news, and thank you so much, really. Excellent presentation. What's next? How do we continue to improve on these numbers? And I know the county has a met team that goes out with an actual psychiatrist. You know, we, we're up in our game, if you will, but you know, what's, what's next?
So what's next for the M Street Navigation Center is going to be the Safe Camping. So we're going to be reaching out to those individuals who are shelter-resistant. So we're going to allow them to camp on-site. We're going to provide them with mental health services, Flood, the outreach team, and we're also going to provide them with medical. And the goal is for them to move into the existing navigation center so that they can utilize the full scope there so that they too could move into permanent housing.
Is it necessary to go through the Navigation Center to, to move them into permanent housing?
In order to get the services, but the ones that will be in the encampment, if they're willing to go straight from the encampments into housing, we can provide that service as well.
I'm really excited to see how it goes. I appreciate that you're flexible and open because this is new and very, very complicated and multi-layered and multifaceted. So I think we keep an open mind, that'd be helpful, right? Because we got to do what works.
Absolutely. And never lose your sense of humor.
I can only imagine. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
A lot of dogs serve there, too. That's, that's.
A lot of pets. We saw 52 pets over the year.
That's remarkable. Really hats off to all of you. Good to see you, Frank, and you guys are doing great work there. Jeremy, you're my hero. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lori and Jeremy and everyone else who's involved, I just want to congratulate you. It's an honor to serve with CAP-K. I have come to recognize what an extraordinary job CAP-K does throughout our community, helping so many people who have so little and giving them hope and opportunity to aspire to a better life, and certainly, there's no demonstration of that more than at the Navigation Center. And I know that the public doesn't think about how difficult that is every day there, but you do it, and particularly Lori, you do it with a smile on your face, and you, you engender enthusiasm with everybody else that's there. So congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Couch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, you can sit. You don't have to stand for me. I just want to thank you for what you do. I and my staff were fortunate enough to take a tour of the M Street facility and the Brendage Lane facility and the Recycling Life Facility all in one day, and it really gave us a good sense of what you do, what they do, and how they're complementary to each other. And it was just very impressive. The whole day was impressive, how much is getting done, and really, how little some people know what's, what's being done. So you're doing a very good job because I don't get any, we don't, I don't receive any complaints about what, about your operation, and that's, that's the first thing I judge it by. So I appreciate, and I appreciate the successes because the real number to me, 130, 133?
133. Actually, it's 140 now because we already placed eight people just this month into housing.
Well, congratulations, because that's the goal, right? Off the street and into, into housing somewhere. So, so keep, just keep doing what you're doing. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Supervisor Peters?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to echo some of the thoughts that were shared. We all see every day how homelessness is impacting our community, and you know, the people going through it, it's not something you'd wish on anybody, but fortunately, there's, there's folks like you guys out there that are doing something about it and making some real positive changes out there. So thank you guys all for what you do, and keep it up, and let us know how we can help.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you all so much for the great work you're doing. We appreciate you. Right, that brings us now to item seven, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the Board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the Board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the Board at a later meeting. Also, the Board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. So now I'll ask if there's any members of the audience that would like to make a public presentation. We ask that you state your name, and please observe our two-minute time limit. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ashley De La Rosa, A-S-H-L-E-Y-D-E-L-A-R-O-S-A, resident of District 5. I'm here today to ask you to do something about public safety for my community, which includes Niles, East of Fairfax, Morning, Brentwood, Park Drive, and all the streets in between. On January 20, this year, on January, my community mourned the short-lived life of Angel Baruman, who was struck on his way to school. After this incident, a petition was created asking for safer streets that include a streetlight and better roads. This petition was created by a mother who also lost her son in June of 2019. This petition, as, as of today, has 2,941 signatures. A couple of weeks ago, as I was driving home, I realized that our students do not have bike lanes and are at risk for the same tragedy to happen again. And my fears came to be when this month, a 52-year-old Gina Rebecca Castaneda was struck and murdered. How many more lives have to be lost in order for you to provide adequate lighting, bike lanes, streetlights, and clean streets? All of you have a responsibility to provide us these safe roads. I fear for my family, and I fear for my community, and all I am asking of you today is to do your job and resolve this.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public speakers this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. That was heartbreaking. Letitia Perez, that was a very nice award for the Lees, and I'm honored to have been able to hear that, and they're also my friends, so thank you. It was very well done. I know there is, there is good here that happens, as evident by some of the things that have gone on this morning and some of the reports, but I'm here to focus on some of the things that need to be changed or that are downright ineffective and not representative of your duties. There's many ills in Kern County. I'm going to start off with Supervisor Scrivener. You shunned your Supervisor Couch's representative, who asked you to participate in the Labor of Harvest Program, which is an excellent program in the outlying areas. Many of our outlying areas and even in-town are hurting. I would like to see more done with that. Our monies are not being well-spent. For example, we approved $10 million for Wi-Fi in Hart Park. Why is that when so many areas in Kern County are not taken care of? There's a loss of jobs, our high, our high rate of crime, homelessness is enroaching everywhere, our roads are in need of repair, there's not sufficient lighting or curbing in the neighborhoods, our law enforcement and fire departments are not fully funded, turnover rate is horrendous, and response times sometimes are all day or not at all. There's a lack of funding for our libraries, and I'm really thankful for the new report here. I don't know how long, if they're open all the time yet, but I hope, I hope so. Our animal services shelters don't have a veterinarian. Our Parks and Recreation Department has no director, so I'm curious who, who does that job? There is no recreation program in the county since the 1980s. Many of our restrooms in our parks are closed or they're still vandalized, you can't use them, but when the boat rigs are at Lake Ming, there's rented porta-potties. I suspect that's because they bring in money. I've been before this Board several times, asking for a new vaccine passport resolution, which I drafted and gave to you as well. Reportedly, repeatedly, I've been ignored. I've asked for meetings, I've never received one, so I'm asking if you would consider a resolution for a local emergency, a proclamation that there is no local, there is no emergency. Look around you. Do you see an emergency? I don't. Everyone knows we're not in an emergency, therefore, I urge you to take some action to protect we, the people who put you in office. We need to see that you stand against this tyranny that is tearing our country apart. And lastly, Supervisor Maggard, you endorsed Jeff Flores, who is running for a seat on this Board. Were you aware of his inability to protect the children he serves as the current High School District Trustee? Were you aware that he has lied about his record about protecting and serving children? Are you aware that he illegally deleted comments on his campaign page that he did not find representative of his self-serving views? He also blocked people from his campaign page for posting things that were not favorable to his campaign?
Ms. Little, your time has expired. I know the clock isn't up on the, on the wall, we're having some trouble with that, but you're at 2 minutes and 40 seconds at least, and so I'd ask you to please bring your comments to a close.
Thank you. There's more about him. He's, I'd just like to know why you endorsed a candidate like that, and if there's more information you want to know about him, I'd be glad to tell you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Board Members. My name's Jamie Anderson. I sent you all an email on 5/8 with the link to the 2,000 mule
Look around you. Do you see an emergency? I don't. Everyone knows we're not in an emergency. Therefore, I urge you to take some action to protect we, the people, who put you in office. We need to see that you stand against this tyranny that is tearing our country apart. And lastly, Supervisor Maggard, you endorsed Jeff Flores, who is running for a seat on this board. Were you aware of his inability to protect the children he serves as the current high school district trustee? Were you aware that he has lied about his record about protecting and serving children? Are you aware that he illegally deleted comments on his campaign page that he did not find representative of his self-serving views? He also blocked people from his campaign page for posting things that were not favorable to his campaign?
Ms. Little, your time has expired. I know the clock isn't up on the wall. We're having some trouble with that. But you're at 2 minutes and 40 seconds at least. And so I ask you to please bring your comments to a close.
Thank you. There's more about him. He's...
Just a little...
I'd just like to know why you endorsed a candidate like that. And if there's more information you want to know about him, I'd be glad to tell you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and board members. My name's Jamie Anderson. I sent you all an email on 5/8 with the link to the 2,000 Mules movie. I received a reply from your assistant, Mr. Couch, pretty quickly, but I haven't heard from any of you others. I sent another link on 5/20 because the lax link was under attack and taken down. It's now playing at the Mayan Theater. So I hope that you have taken the time to watch that movie. It's very informative. True the Vote has bold evidence from geo-tracking data from our cell phones apps that can trap every single one of us, our every move. Nobody is excluded. Anyone can purchase this data from these app companies. They've collected data. True the Vote has collected data from October 1 through January 6. They have the data of a killing of a seven-year-old girl, and two gang members were arrested. It's very compelling evidence that they have, and they were able to capture those gentlemen. In addition, the CDC used the same data to track people to see if they were complying to lockdowns. These cartels use nonprofits to funnel money to pay ballot harvesters. They have evidence from all 50 states, including California, which is one of the 74 rings. Kern County happens to be number seven in this ring. Seth Keschel's list, which is an article I also forwarded to you on 5/20 so you would have that information. The Valley Ring is headquartered most likely in Fresno. There's three different classes, and Kern County ranked highest with a Class A of over 60,000 Biden votes that contributed to the election of 2020. Ms. Perez had made a statement in a previous meeting that I was attending at. She said Trump won. Well, they cheated with Senate seats, congressional seats. Hence the statement infiltration instead of invasion and what's happening at our state capitol right now with Pan, Wicks, and Weiner and Company, and the Rockefeller Foundation, and the egregious...
Ms. Anderson, your time has expired. Ms. Anderson, your time has expired. If you could please bring your comments to a close. Thank you.
Californians are opposing these bills and showing up at our state capitol. And they are still passing... They're opposing these votes, but these people are still passing them. They're not representing the people that they serve. There is no emergency. It needs to end. The corrupt media, along with the career politicians, are not standing up to what is happening.
Ms. Anderson, your time has expired. Please bring your comments to a close.
In closing, our voter rolls are dirty. We need voter ID and to go back to paper ballots and know who the winner is the night of the election, not a week, two weeks, a month later.
Thank you. Any other speakers, please? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Leah Roberts. I actually reside in District Three. I have left a voicemail. I just want to let it be kind of known that I am looking into a lot of things right now. But I have left a voicemail with the DA's office because there seems to be something weird. I was a little concerned when I was at a school board meeting last week, and I had Paul Myers mention Maggard reserving some property, that there plans to be some, like, low-income housing in a very nice area of Oil Dell, mind you. And you're just going to ruin it. But I live actually right on this major street where you're getting ready to do it. But it just seems weird that that district had mentioned a reservation of property. So I don't know what's going on there, but I did leave a voicemail for DA.
Any other speakers, please?
Good morning again, Dennis McLean. I want to thank Mrs. Perez for her presentation. She did a very fine job. And it took, I guess, you to make a step. Some of the other staff may have dropped the ball. And I support Mary and Jamie's presentations. Very, very good information. While walking from the nearby parking structure to the board chambers, I strolled by the newly-installed drop box just outside this building. To my surprise, I saw no mechanical lock on the lower door, rather a plastic tie. My question to CAO, Mr. Alsop, what in the heck is up with that? Do we assume all locations are like this? I've spoken before you my concerns of our voting system. My question this morning is how many of the board and staff have ever seen the overwhelming evidence of voter fraud presented by Mike Lindell and, most recently, 2,000 Mules? I know one board member has attempted to follow the truth. My concern, have the remainder of you administrators and staff followed suit? In closing, I believe this election system is corrupt and needs transparency for the sake of our republic. One last comment. I pray the new county clerk, auditor, and election official is not so arrogant. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Next speaker, please.
Members of the board, I would like to know what the...
Excuse me. What's your name, please, sir?
Back again, my name is Wayne Wong. And my question to the board is, is it a policy of the board to have all the voting receptacles under video surveillance? This is brought to a point of interest because that movie, 2,000 Mules, illustrates how people were putting ballots into the box and stuffing them and so forth. Outside the building here, I see no video camera on that voting box. And I noticed that the regular voting box receptacle has... We used to have video camera in plain sight. So at the minimum, there is no video camera in plain sight on the voting box outside. So I took our ballots, or each of our families took each of our ballots down to the inside receptacle and deposit there for better security. And I would encourage anyone to do that instead of putting it in the mail or sticking it in the recorded box as it exists to guarantee that those votes are counted properly. I'd also like to draw your attention. I received email saying that my vote has been received and counted. And as I understand it, that's not really true. The vote was received, but they aren't counted until the signatures are verified and further processed before they really are counted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Paul Lefesty. I'm in area... I'm sorry, District Three, Mike Maggard's district. I wanted to say that I had a very uneventful voting this year. I was able to... I received both the state pamphlet and the sample ballot. Before I actually got the regular ballot, I will say there were a couple of years when I actually got the sample ballot afterwards, but that was not a problem this year. I mailed it in, got no problems, got the notice a week later that the ballot had gone through all the stages, including being certified for processing. I know that when you do it early enough, you actually do get that done before a lot of ballots start hitting. So I'm pretty pleased with that. I don't know what is meant by the newly-installed box. I know for a fact it was here in the 2020 general election because I personally filmed video of people dropping it in the box, their ballots, with their permission. I was making a video. We marched from campaign headquarters, and we had a general dropping of ballots then. But that was fully... I don't shoot people on video. I don't shoot them any... I don't shoot people, period. But what I mean is that it was a very... Huh? Anymore, okay. Not really, okay. Yeah, that's behind me. Anyway, so I said it was a very smooth operation. As far as the movie, 2,000 Mules, which is actually playing just across the street at the Maya Cinemas, Ben Shapiro, who is even said... Who is a big Trump supporter, said that that movie does not show any evidence that those pings made anyone has actually voted. So even in the media like Fox News, they're not taking it that seriously, that movie, because it doesn't actually present any evidence. It just raises questions. My understanding with pings is they only ping every 15 minutes on your... Unless you have an actual tracker on at the time. So I don't know where that information is coming from. But anyway, I'm glad I voted. I'm glad my vote has been counted. And I feel very confident in the system here in Kern County, at least. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers, please? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to board member announcements or reports. Do we have any board member announcements or reports? Supervisor Couch?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. If you've noticed, I have an award sitting in front of me, and I wanted you all to know that last week, in about 30 hours, I drove to Lake Tahoe, accepted this award on behalf of the county, and drove back home. But it was from the... It is from the California Association of Park and Rec Districts. They recognized Kern County as a... It is a... What is it called? Legislative Leadership Award. And it is because, if you'll recall, when we got our CARES Act allocation, we are the only county in California that decided to share that or allocate some of that to special districts. No one else did that. No other county in California did that. And I told them it felt kind of odd to be receiving an award for doing something that I think our staff recommended, and I don't think we even thought twice about it. It just seemed like a rational, normal thing to do. But anyway, I wanted to recognize... I'm going to give this to you, Mr. Alsop, and you can figure out how you'd like to display it. But you all made a recommendation, and we wisely took it that earned us an award. And it didn't seem like much at the time, but compared to up and down the state, I think we look pretty good. So congratulations to you all for that wise recommendation and to us for taking it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Any other comments from members of the board? Okay, seeing none. We do have an item yet to consider. This is a request to add a non-agenda item. And I would request a motion to consider adding closed session, item number 62. And in that motion, we would need to make the finding that the need to take action on a non-agenda matter occurred after the agenda was posted on May 19, 2022. County officials learned about facts and circumstances requiring this board's immediate action concerning formerly-initiated litigation related to a temporary restraining order filed against the county. And so I need a motion on that to add that to our closed session agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so that brings us to the conclusion of our business for this morning. We do have a few items to consider in closed session. Under county administrative office, we have item 60. And under county council, we have items 61 and 62, which we just added. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session. We are adjourned.